Just like school. Thank you, everyone. Good morning. I'd like to introduce everyone that doesn't know. Arnie Jordan, our former selectman, best friend, buddy, team player. Thank you, Arnie. Men, the selectmen have an award for you this morning.
It is resolved by the selectmen of the town of Greenwood as follows. Whereas Arnold has been a MSAB 44 school board director representing the town of Greenwood for six years, whereas Donald has been a selectman, assessor, overseer before for the town of Greenwood for 15 years, and be it resolved by the selectmen of the town of Greenwood that Arnold Jordan is hereby recognized for his great achievements and honors that he has brought upon this community with the 2004 Greenwood spirit of American foundation tribute, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be appropriately framed and presented to Arnold Jordan more appropriate display, designed by the selectmen. Thank you.
I wouldn't be on the board if you hadn't told me how easy it was.
Thank you, Arnie. You want to say something?
No, I'd say thank you for what you like that, so give me that side. That was pretty good.
Good job.
My family is obviously doing a secret.
I knew it.
Thank you, Arnie.
Welcome.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Article one, for which the moderator by written ballot signed over our in-house committee. Three ballots passed, well, actually, no, sorry, I'm heading myself here. Motion for moderator. And motions for moderator.
Nominate Vern Matfield.
Yeah, the nomination for Vern Matfield. Second. Any other nominations for moderator?
Can I nominate, Arnie?
You can. I second.
Okay, seeing there are none, we need three written ballots. Anyone like to act the ballot for moderator?
For Brian.
Oh, you've got fish?
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Arnie. You, Vern Matfield, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as we don't be a victim there after all this time. You swear that you'll discharge all the duties of common party as moderator for this meeting in the election according to the Constitution and laws of the state.
I do.
The only time in all the years I've moderated that we had an election for moderator with two candidates was in South Paris when we had about 500 people. I believe it was a special town meeting and they had us go vote for moderator. We waited, it took about 20 minutes to get all those people through. Unfortunately, it was a hard meeting. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody this morning? Congratulations, Arnie, well deserved.
Thank you very much. Always been a good crew to work with.
Yeah, what a difference that makes.
Before we get any further on the agenda, we do have a candidate for state house seat this morning that Joan Beal would like to say hi and introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Joan Beal, I'm from Norway. I'm running for state legislature for this district, which also includes Norway, Greenwood. I won't go through all the towns, there's a lot of them, but I appreciate being able to be here today. I'm interested in what town issues are, so I figure a town meeting is a good place to start. And you will probably see me knocking on your door at some point in the next six months, so thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. I would also like to have your approval this morning to use the main moderator's manual if we have anything we need to check out for approved regulations, is that okay? Use the main moderator's manual? Yep. Thank you. As always, I will not accept a negative motion. And this election up front ordinances cannot be amended on the floor today, they have to go up or down as they are printed. And I don't like move the question, if it's a busy debate, I don't like to have move the question right at the beginning of the discussion, because it changes people that don't want to speak. And other than that, I think we'll go to Article two. Article two, which elects a selectman, assessor, and overseer before by written ballot for a three-year term starting July 1st, 2024. Could I nominate?
Nominate Amy Chapman.
Amy Chapman, second. She nominated and seconded. Any other candidates? Any other nominations? Do we not see any yet? Could I have a motion for nominations to cease?
Move.
Article second, nominations backseat at this time. We have one candidate, Amy. Would you like to say hi?
Okay, I'll say hi. Every year I prepare something to say and nobody asks me to say anything. This year I didn't prepare anything to say, so... But I'll just say that I'm a relative newcomer to Greenwood, I've only lived here 35 years, and I've been on the board for 15, and I just love this town to pieces. I think what I love most about it is something that Sandra Barton Morgan, who was a friend of mine who passed away five years ago, Brian's mom, we dedicated the town report to her that year, and she said that she'd been away for 40 years and she knew that a lot of things had changed in Greenwood, but she liked to think that it was still the same town she grew up in and that everybody still cared about each other.
Well said. Thank you, Amy. At this time, I believe the ballot box is ready, you can bring your ballots into your choice for selectmen. The results of your vote, seven down the pan, all settled. Amy Chapman, as you play our first election selectman, assessor, and overseer before for another term. Article three, shall the town vote to accept the following stipend to board of selectmen to the ensuing year. Selectman, assessor, and overseer for $150 per month per selectman. Could I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that Articles, this Article, Article 21, be rolled into one vote, just like we've done before, with the exception of Article four, which actually should be voted, what are you trying to say? No, we're not going to increase, with the all the recommended amount. Did I do that right, Karen? Including Article four.
So, we're going to do Article three and then through four, four increases because of the, you know, the threat. You might be able to explain that. That one actually doesn't have to be voted down, or pushed off to afterward, after this vote. How do you, how do you, that's right, you kind of know we've done this. I guess I would have somebody make a motion to put Article four at the end, and then we'll know for sure.
As, as spoken.
Okay. All in favor of putting Article four as the last article? Thank you, and vote. Article four will be the last one. And at this time, we have a motion to vote on Article three through...
Twenty-one, I believe.
Twenty-one.
All expense articles.
All expense articles, all voting on them as they are printed. Been moved in second, put Articles three and four through twenty-one, and five through twenty-one in one vote. Any questions on any one of those articles? Not seen, I dare to be a vote. All those in favor of all those articles in one vote? Thank you. Any votes? Six Articles three and five through twenty-one, should be approved as presented. Now, Article 22.
Do we have to do four at the very end?
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't matter.
That's what the vote is for.
Right.
Article 22, shall the town vote to enact the town of Greenwood amended fire department ordinance? The recommendation is that there are several housekeeping amendments to bring these ordinance up to date with state regulations. Could I have a motion? Senator, you want to second? Been moved in seconded. Any questions on Article 22? No questions, no explanations needed, you're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 22 is read, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed, Article 22 is approved as presented. Article 23, shall the town vote to enact the town of Greenwood fire and EMS impact fee ordinance? The recommendation is that the board of selectmen and fire chief recommend this ordinance to help supplement the Greenwood Fire EMS Department's capital improvement fund for future town approved purchases for equipment and/or statement upgrades. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Thank you. Okay, been moved in seconded. Any questions on Article 22?
Vern?
Yes.
Perhaps for clarification, if we could just ask the chief to give a brief summary of what this means for the voters?
Absolutely. I'm kind of called by chief in Greenwood for those of you who don't know me. This article is intended to help keep the taxpayers' taxes down by taxing anybody building a brand-new property, and the first $100,000 of that expense is passed, so they're only paying 1.5% of a one-time tax fee for an impact fee, because they're impacting our number of calls as the town continues to grow in volume by new houses and new people. They're paying this one-time, 1.5% impact fee at the time of their building permit for their new residence, over $100,000. So remodeling, adding on a porch, a deck, changing some windows, even a garage, does not qualify unless it's over $100,000 in materials and cost, labor costs. And that's designed to help us keep our taxation down and draw from the new people that are coming into town, building and adding on, which is adding to our call volume and need for upgrades in equipment. Thank you, Chief Paul.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because I brought this up in the vice meeting. At this time, this ordinance, this impact fee, can we at this time change that percentage?
No.
Can. I do feel it should be more.
The reason is...
Oh, I understand so well.
That's the way it was written, and anybody that's visiting here today has the right to know that it was going to be voted on as...
That's okay. No, no, I was just trying.
Anything further? On Article 22. Seeing nothing then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 23 is read, and it's likely to be displayed. Thank you, and opposed, Article 23 is approved as presented. Article 24, shall the town vote to enact the town of Greenwood amended parking yard ordinance? Several housekeeping amendments to add qualifications to the ordinance. Could I have a motion, please?
As read.
Been moved in seconded, as read. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about this article. My name's Charlene Spalding, and I live on Haytown in Casco. I think this ordinance, what's that? I mean, I'm from Casco, yeah, I'm nervous and everything, anyways, I'm in Greenwood, and my husband just told me that. And anyways, I think this article, this ordinance, might have come about because of my neighbors. She's, I don't even know if they're here, so this is very, very difficult. But anyways, I was getting off Hicks Pond, and there was an official car parked there. I didn't happen to notice the ambulance, but I do know it was in the government official car. He immediately rolled down his window and asked me about all the dogs that are constantly barking. He said he had sat there and had his lunch a couple times, and he's heard dogs barking, crying, and he was really concerned about it. Well, I, you know, it's a bad place to say it, but not a real, true, real dog lover, but I did, I did, you know, talk to him about it, and I said that I thought several times that people had thought that maybe the dogs were being not well cared for, and I thought that they had talked to town about it, but really nothing had been done. But anyways, he was really truly upset, and he said he wanted to do something, he was going to do something about it, because he'd heard, he was a dog lover, he had eight of his own, and he was really concerned that those dogs were not being well cared for. And I said, "Well, go ahead, knock yourself out and see how it goes." So I think that's how that may have come about, I don't know exactly, but the dogs do bark a lot, I would say almost all the time. I've gone over to talk to them a couple times, they don't even come out of the house. In fact, they run in the house when they see me come in. So I've never had the opportunity to talk to them about it, but it is a concern, it's a concern for the neighbors, and certainly a concern for the dogs. I mean, I don't have to be, you know, a dog lover to know that I don't want dogs abused at all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question. Has everyone had a chance to read the amended ordinance?
Has everyone had a chance to read the amended ordinance? That wants to read it? I would say so.
Personally, I just feel like it's an insult to the neighbors in Greenwood City.
Can everybody hear her?
No.
After three years of putting up with barking dogs and the smell in the neighborhood, I just feel like this ordinance is full of mites and babies as far as taking care of the problem.
Did you hear most of what she said?
No.
No? I think it's your board.
I just feel like this ordinance is an insult to the people who live in Greenwood City, because it really doesn't accomplish anything, it's full of mites and babies as far as taking care of the problem. And this has been going on for three years. We're going into another summer of smelling that smell of the boyish, and listening to dogs bark constantly. What can we do about it? We need, we need action. We need someone to solve this problem. And I understand that they're running a business, I have no problem with that, but I don't want to hear it, I don't want to smell it.
I understand.
Do we have a new animal control officer? And, I mean, is the problem going to get solved?
So, to paraphrase her, if you understand, she feels that there isn't enough bite in the ordinance. Yeah, yeah, so, wow, I forgot that, that was a... But to me is, yeah, the selectman addressed what she can do, I mean, my first thing is to tell her, has she, or is she actually approaching the town manager, the code enforcer, and the selectmen to see what they are actually, actually, not proposing, doing in her place? I mean, I don't think it's a place right here, but that's just my recommendation, when you have a problem, you go to the, you start at the lowest level and work your way up.
That must happen.
So you have been to that?
Other people have.
Okay, well, right, okay. So the people concerned need to actually almost go all together, sit down with the manager and the selectmen and say, "Here's us," and get very focused on that one issue. I don't know if this, and I'm going to leave it at that, I don't know if anybody on the board or the, or Kim or wants to address any farther, but that's a particular, I mean, is this, is this, is this article going to help you with that situation down there? I'll leave and I'll, I'm done.
Sorry? So, if you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you, the, the, the thing that's written in black is what we had for an ordinance before, and everything else is what we've added to try to make some clear guidelines that we can say these are being violated. So this is a place to start. We, we have a problem with having ordinances enforced, because we don't have a town police force. State police and county police are never in town and won't come to town for a barking dog. We do have a new animal control officer who I hope is going to help with the problem that you've been talking about, but this is, this greatly expands the parameters of what we had before for a barking dog ordinance. So that's one point. The other point, which you're not going to probably want to hear is, as it says in section four, agricultural working dogs engaged in herding livestock and agricultural guard dogs engaged in protecting livestock or warning the owners of danger to livestock as described in 7 MRSA 39500 are exempted from the provisions of this ordinance. So that's a state law, and apparently there is no breed specificity, so if you've got a bunch of yipping Chihuahuas and they're keeping coyotes away from your chickens,
that's not the case here.
Well, hopefully that can be proven, but, yeah, and it isn't, you know, the whole ordinance is not written for the town for one particular case. That happens to be one case, it's getting a lot of attention right now, but this would certainly imply here in the village, if someone was putting their dog out on a leash and on a run and leaving it all day, that it was barking and disturbing the neighbors, we'd have some way to address it.
And this ordinance, I think you've got, may want to say, has quietly been reviewed to see what we can do by a lawyer for that. All right, yeah, it would be, I would say, you guys usually run everything by the lawyer who's very diverse, and what we can do, I'll limit to his recommendation.
Vern? Every ordinance that comes up for a vote, either a new one or a proposed revised one, always goes to the town attorney. They make sure that the so-called Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. If we're not able to get anything back from the attorney before an appropriate gathering to vote on it, it doesn't come up for a vote, because we need to make sure that that is approved.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you.
Yeah, I do think this ordinance would address the problem at this point anyways, because the situation is such that you can't really even see where the animals are, you walk past the place, there's, you know, down over the embankment, there's just this, I don't know, it's not even a very large pen, with just bunches of dogs in there, and they're just barking constantly and fighting and yelling and doing whatever they do, but I do think that this would begin to address the problem that would perhaps let this business know that they're going to have to change some of their business techniques.
Thank you. I think it's another tool, and I'll make the motion that discussion ends.
A motion to cease discussion, you have a second. Been moved in seconded, to stop discussion. All those in favor of stopping discussion? Thank you, and opposed? Thank you. Are you ready for the vote on Article 24? Shall the town vote to enact the town of Greenwood amended parking yard ordinance? Recommended as discussed, and as well as housekeeping amendments. All those in favor of Article 24 is read and discussed and explained? Thank you, those opposed? It is approved unanimously. Article 25, shall the town vote to enact the town of Greenwood adult-use cannabis retail ordinance? Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Any discussion or questions on Article 24?
So, this is first to whether, except, can I have a little, a little bit more, I mean, it's already law, you can use. What is this extending it?
This is a retail, allows a retail business. There are four separate ordinances, because there are four separate businesses that we can be involved in.
So this is to basically summarize, this is to allow a store, for a store to be here to sell it, and if approved, there's already ordinances controlling it, right? One of the things that's brought up to me is, to me, I'd like to have a better explanation, you're not supposed to be able to smell the product once you're off their property, correct?
I think that's what...
I think that's what I heard. Yeah, there is, there is odor guideline within the ordinance, and several years ago we passed to allow medical cannabis in town, this is just expanding it to allow it to be recreational if there is a business that wants to do that.
Okay, so my question is, has to do with that odor part... Okay, so my question is, has to do with that odor part. I mean, is it literally saying, you're walking by the street and, you know, you smell it. It is hard to feel. It's like anything that's in a large quantity in a concentrated area. What happens if, after, I don't know, you give them a few warnings or whatever? What do they do? Do they automatically have to? And then the same thing as an ordinance. Sure, some of those ordinances aren't backed up. A code enforcer, you know, takes a while sometimes, right, legally?
Yeah, I think that it would probably be addressed through not relicensing, except...
Right, so then you have to wait through... Okay. I was just wondering, so is... Because there are people, just like they're talking about the dog thing. If something comes up... I drive a truck commercially, all with three states. I can... And I legally cannot smoke because long-term effects cannot be... It isn't... Doesn't clear out and affects your driving ability. So you go down the road and you smell it and you... It goes off in your... You know, it's like secondhand smoke. Where does it actually affect you legally? In this case, that's... I mean, that... I think, I'm pretty sure it's very unlikely that happens. But still, it affects neighbors. People know... I know places that are within a few hundred feet of a high school that you can smell it. And you just kind of wonder. But to me, I'm just wondering in that part of the ordinance. At first, it's like, do we want to allow a detailed store in this town? And then if we do, these are the ordinances they've got to follow, correct?
Those are the guidelines within the ordinance that they have to follow.
So how much... Okay.
Excuse me. Can we go back to 24 with the same thing? The smell, the concentrated smell?
I'm going to stick to this article. We've got to stick to this one. You've got the other...
We don't have any ordinance on the...
You can't change... You can't change the written ordinance. You've got to accept it or not. It's just the way it is. Just read... All you can do is read the other ordinance and then you can go to the selectmen and actually put a proposal through. But anyways, that's it. I'm finished. Yeah, close the discussion and vote.
Vern, just to clarify on Bill's statement. CDL drivers, commercial driver licenses are federally regulated.
Yes.
Marijuana is not legal federally, although it is in Maine. State regulations in Maine are okay. But our licenses are federal, and that's why marijuana, first or second hand, is not allowed for CDL drivers.
Thank you. Great.
Classification. How do you control the odor coming across the property line?
That's their problem. It's called filth. It's filth. It's like a filter, a smoke unit.
I know people that won't let their children go out and play on the door because of the odor. And I know some people that actually want to leave out of their house because of the odor. So I'm trying to figure out, what's the enforcement? Who do they go to? If it's so overpowering and children aren't allowing their own...
It's kind of hard to control another resident any more than you can control them burning a fire, burning anything, right? I'm assuming.
Some of it is really strong.
That's true. It's hard to control your neighbors. It's hard to control them no matter what.
Right, and any neighbor can be processing for their own use. So this only applies to commercial facilities.
Just a commercial.
Yeah, just think about if somebody doesn't like Christmas tree smells and you have a Christmas... You grow Christmas trees. There's somebody out there. I guarantee you in this world, there's somebody who doesn't like that smell. Even though I deliver pellets. People... Most of people love the smell of pellets, but I have a few people, when I put pellets in, don't like the smell of the wood when it goes in and makes an odor. They don't like it. So it's... That's the hard thing to do.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Ready for the vote?
There's a limit on the number of businesses. No, I can do that, okay.
Yes?
If I could just... If I could just piggyback onto that. There's no limit on the number of businesses. There are fees associated with any business who wants to either medical, marijuana. So there are four different classifications. This is no different for retail. So there's no... There's no limit. But each business that applies has to pay whatever the fee structure is based upon their particular business.
And relicensed every year.
Right, there's a sheet with all... With that fee structure. And for example, while we're talking about retail right now, so the initial application is $2,000. Annual renewal for a business that's in good standing, in other words, hasn't had complaints from the neighbors and/or been accused of breaking any other laws, annual renewal $1,500.
Which is relatively small for that, but you're still a fee. And so that ordinance on that part of the odor, you're saying it's a guideline. Well, that, you know, you saw the parrot, the movie about the pirates. You said, eh, it's sort of a guideline, the rules. So it's just a matter of that following guidelines is up to the relicensing and the ordinance side, and how we can enforce it.
I... Yes, I assume it would be similar to a liquor license.
Right.
If there are complaints, they'll get renewed.
Right. So that's the only way to get...
My quick question. Does it have to be, if they're opening this business, does it have to be in the area zone for business? Can they go into a residential area and football company smelling all over the place? Any guidelines? Other places, we know, you're zone for business and commercials. Is there any way of controlling them? I mean, excuse me, I am... Residential commercials.
The only zoning we have is, I think, the shoreline zoning, right?
Some people don't like zoning when it comes up for discussion.
The only zoning is shoreline. They bring the shoreline up into that...
But I was trying to think of a tool to try and cut down on that gentleman said, the amount coming into this area. A lot of people are coming into older homes from other states just because they can grow and sell right here in Greenwood, that's what we're... So it's a problem.
But if they go commercial, if they sell their product to another business, they're in violation without getting a permit.
And plus, it'll affect your property because some people don't want to even witness to something like this.
So then you just vote all these ordinances down and don't allow. That's all you do. That's how you handle it right now.
But that still won't address individuals.
It won't. You can't... This has nothing to do with that commercial. And if you have... And if you have a... If somebody in your neighborhood, you suspect that you report it to... Because if they're selling commercially now and they're not doing commercial, now it becomes a county and state problem, which we see on the news, these illegal growing places are getting hit by.
Very good. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Article 25. Shall the town vote to enact the town agreement of Greenwood adult use cannabis retail ordinance? All those in favor of these things? Thank you. Those opposed? It is been approved. Article 26. Shall the town vote to enact the town agreement of adult use cannabis properties in the pantry ordinance? Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Thank you.
Second?
The move is seconded. Questions on Article 27? Any questions? The move is seconded. Apparently we've covered the discussion. Okay. If you're ready for the vote on Article 26, I'll ask you for it. All those in favor of Article 26 as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 26 is approved as presented. Article 27. Shall the town vote to enact the town agreement of Greenwood adult use cannabis testing facility ordinance? Do I have a motion, please?
Shall read.
Thank you. Second? The move is seconded. Any question or discussion on Article 27? Seeing none, I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of Article 27 as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 27 is approved with minor opposition. Article 28. Shall the town vote to enact the town agreement of adult use cannabis cultivation facility ordinance? Do I have a motion, please?
Shall read.
Second? Thank you. It's the move is seconded. No discussion on Article 28.
Yes. Comment. Be careful. Highly careful what you wish for. You are in a recreational facility, recreational area. That's how the state looks at this with all our water. It's what it is. Been going on for over 100 years. It's how the state at the federal level. You're asking to bring in more industry. It is going to affect, highly affect your property value when you go to resell. People will not want to be here. Highly, you will lose thousands and thousands of dollars. That's my comment. You will lose a lot. And other businesses will lose a lot that do work here. End of call.
Thank you. Anything else on Article 28? Not seeing anything else, then I'd ask for the vote. All those in favor of Article 28 as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 28 is approved with minor opposition.
Minor? That must have been a 60-40. It's more than mine.
Eight opposed.
Okay.
I would watch you.
Do you want a roll call?
No, it's done, pass. People don't really... It's too exciting. You know, lots of others. No, no, I... Yeah, I know, you had to...
Article 29. To see if the town will vote to set dates when the taxes on real estate and personal property shall be due and payable and after which the interest rate shall approve. The recommendation is two installment payments. First installment due Tuesday, April 1st, 2024, with interest starting on Monday, November 1st, 2024. Second installment due Friday, April 1st, 2025, with interest starting on Monday, May 2nd, 2025. Do I have a motion, please?
Same as last year. Can we... Can we... All business articles be rolled in? Because nothing... Nothing here has to do with money. All these business articles. I can't remember the numbers. And then we leave number four at the end. 29 through 38. They're all just... Unless the selectmen see anything they want to really address on a one-to-one or anybody else sees. That's my motion.
If you have a motion, you...
Wrap them all up together?
Second motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to vote on Articles 29 through 38 in one vote, as they are written, as they are printed. Would you like to discuss any one of them? Any questions on any one of Articles 29 to 38?
Just some people, if they don't have a chance to read all of these, this basically authorizes the selectmen and the town manager and the treasurer to do what they've already been doing.
He's a pretty much loyal employee.
Right.
Okay. Any question? This is the place. Seeing none, no? I'd ask you for the vote. All those in favor of Articles 29 through 38? Please indicate... All those in favor, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Articles 29 through 38 are approved in one vote. Now, back to Article 4. Article 4 says, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $1,610,246 established for Greenwood by state law. Any event that be misprovided approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit.
Is it true that we drew not since we've already passed all of the financial articles and we did not go over, that we don't need to vote on this?
We've got to vote on it.
Okay. So we want to vote no? Okay. So we were bumping right up against the cap.
Vote yes and no. It doesn't matter because we've already set the budget.
Right.
You can vote either way.
Any questions on Article 4? Knowing that we don't need this article so that it can be voted down if we wish. All those in favor of Article 4 as read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Okay. Two opposed and none in favor. I guess that's the way it is. It is repeated.
Thank you.
One comment? Add one comment for the opposed. Those articles on the cannabis, if they pass and the facility moves in, the town revenue, the town revenues from the private homes is going to be tremendously less. People are going to say, I don't want it. They will challenge the town in their tax assessment. They will do what they want. There's a lot of people that have enough money that their properties, their businesses, will be affected by it. I believe you're going to see, if somebody moves in, they're going to go after the town and say, lower my taxes because the value of my land has gone down. Any more than... Because you... The big thing is because you don't have a zoning ordinance. You probably should bring that up so we know where the businesses are. That'd be one thing. Having a business area and control them, that probably would help. It's just you're losing control. It's just like the problems you had with the Airbnb rentals. And controlling... I mean, because the Airbnb rentals is another thing which we know, which has to go with their ability to keep their land safe from overuse of their sewer... Their sewer or the dog owners.
Are there...
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you do have the history that they know medical marijuana facility came in. So it doesn't look like it's very right now.
We've discussed our ordinances and I think that's enough. We're beyond that, so thank you for your comments. Motion to adjourn?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs to be in the meeting, but... Guys, get up. Ken, can you get up? So, in addition to having a birthday tomorrow, this year, Kim has now been our most wonderful town manager in the world for 20 years.
We got her a very special card. In honor of that, we even put on some gluten-free crackers. Who the hell knows?
It's not... It's not reefer, right?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Vern.
Hey, one more comment. Everyone should be aware that on Memorial Day, May 27th, beginning at 11:15 hour, the ceremonies will commence in this building once again. And everyone is invited to...
Thank you.
Hand up.
All in favor of adjourn? Any opposed? Thank you.